...by Louis V. Mayer before he joined MGM. And this building has an amazing history. Norma Shear helped open up the building when it first was christened. But then, later years, it turned into Central Casting. So literally, we are right here, straight out of Central Casting, every day in Hollywood. And it was an important intersection, near where a lot of the early filming happened in the heart of Hollywood. Having a historic survey will benefit us in two ways. One, it will provide us with knowledge, whether it's a tourist who's coming to Los Angeles to see part of our history, or whether it's somebody who's a fourth or fifth generation Angelino, like myself, wanting to know more about his or her city. It will give us that knowledge, that roadmap, and a way to navigate L.A. and understand our past. But secondly, it will also help us preserve that past by flagging those assets that we have. When there's redevelopment or a proposed project going on, we'll immediately know what the historical significance of buildings and streets and neighborhoods are. Right now, that has been somewhat of a guessing game, or it's been uneven, and those who might have knowledge about a particular building come forward, but the city hasn't done that in a comprehensive way. So now, we will have the tools to understand our entire city and its history.
Historic preservation is about much more than just aesthetics, about beautiful old buildings that are worth preserving solely for their beauty and architectural character. Historic preservation is also important because it's about our economic development, it's about revitalization in our communities, it's about using the history of our city as a marketing tool to attract visitors and attract economic reinvestment.
This was a building that was built in 1924, in the period of great growth of Hollywood. It was a five-story office building, built in a Gothic style. A three-story addition was made to it in 1929. Historically, the building has been one of the prominent office buildings in Hollywood. It housed the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences, the Screen Actors Guild, and very prominently, Ronald Reagan had his office as president of the Screen Actors Guild here from 1947 to 1953, which, that office, in fact, in the corner right above us, has been preserved. Much of the paneling and the floor plan of that office was preserved, although the unit was converted to residential. That's what we have done with the building, is we took the eight floors, leaving the ground floor lobby and two retail spaces as retail, and have put in 42 residential units, their apartments, on the upper seven floors. It has been made possible, in large part, due to three significant incentives. One is the Adaptive Reuse Program, which has been adopted by the City of Los Angeles and is permitted in downtown Los Angeles, Wilshire Boulevard area, and Hollywood. But moreover, for a building that is a historic building, we are able to take advantage of a federal and state tax credit program, that is, for buildings that are rehabilitated in conformance of Secretary of State Terrell's guidelines. And in addition, we've been able to take advantage of a program called the Mills Act, which provides for a property tax abatement for up to 10 years.
The older side of downtown, when you get into the historic core and even further east, those are areas of the city that have stood in for virtually every city on the east coast, other countries. You know, Prestige would be a good example. It was a movie that was shot about two years ago downtown on Broadway. The entire movie took place in Victorian-era London, but because of some of the grand movie palaces there and some of the older buildings, it was able to fit right in as turn-of-the-century London. But large parts of L.A., particularly on the east side, the older brick buildings, they sit in for New York and Philadelphia and Chicago routinely. L.A. has a little bit of everything, an interesting place to live, the architecture that's here. We've got some of the most modern, beautiful architecture, and we have some of the fantastic old architecture that people don't immediately think L.A. has. So I think it's a mix, it's the mix of the people and the buildings and the history here that make L.A. such an interesting place to be. But in the long run, I think it's important because it's, you know, first step that you have to do is catalog and understand and inventory some of the great buildings that we have here. And a lot of the filmmakers and the film crews know about these places, and the scouts and location managers, but I think the wider public is not aware of the wealth of architecture and older buildings that we have. And so if you can get some people that are concerned and appreciative of some of these older buildings, having these older buildings here selfishly for Film L.A. and for the industry is a benefit, because it allows people to do some filmmaking here that they might have to go elsewhere and do if we don't keep and restore and, you know, hang on to these buildings.
Survey L.A. is ultimately a planning tool, giving policymakers, community members, property owners, and developers alike comprehensive information on Los Angeles' architectural, cultural, historic, and social history in a way that is manageable, is centralized, contained in one place, available to all on the web, to guide our decisions as a city and guide private investment as we move forward and constantly evolve in an ever-changing Los Angeles.
This information is great for all Angelinos, but as a policymaker, it has particular importance to me, because the decisions that we make about land use often happen so quickly in this city, but we don't have enough time to assess the historical significance of our actions. This will give me a place to readily go to, to immediately have deep and broad knowledge about a neighborhood or a building, and to be able to preserve that history that we have even as we build a new city here in Los Angeles.
It establishes a baseline of understanding of what defines a high-quality building within a community, and also defines where there's opportunity to allow change in a community.
Survey L.A. is only going to be a success if the community is actively involved in this process. It's community members themselves who know best what is significant in their own neighborhood.
I think a citywide survey is really a great attempt to put together the history, the diversity, all the different stories that helped to make Los Angeles this great cosmopolitan area.
I think we recognize in city government that as much knowledge as the government has, the people of Los Angeles have even more. Those stories that are handed down from families, people who have lived in neighborhoods or whose families used to be there, we want them to be a part of this project. We want them to go to the Survey L.A. website to let us know what history they know, so that we can add that to the pool of knowledge that we have.
This will allow neighbors to both maintain and regenerate these neighborhoods, making Los Angeles the highly livable place it has always been.
I think that we're going to find a lot of ways in which we understand one another and really appreciate the values that everybody has brought to creating this fabulous city.
Our work does good work in the world for others. We've succeeded.
We're brave enough to do it, that we're brave enough to think of the magnitude of a city like Los Angeles, the complexity of a city like Los Angeles, and say yes, together with the city, with the Getty, with National Trust, with whomever and everyone we can to pull a really incredible team of consultants and historians and thinkers and politicians and citizens together to say, "We're going to do this.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to your city council meeting for Friday, December 10th, 2010. We're here in the John Furaro Council Chambers, room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for a couple weeks when we are out of session or participating in League of Cities conferences. We are here on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Every other Friday, the first Friday of the month, we are in our Van Nuys City Council Chambers. Welcome first to our guests who are here, members of the public who have joined us in council chambers today. That is one of the five ways that you can follow your city council. The second is by showing up in San Pedro or Van Nuys, where our city council chambers there may be closer to where you live and where we broadcast these meetings live, and you were able to take testimony from members of the public from those locations as well. Third, we're broadcast on Channel 35, and we welcome all of our viewers on Channel 35 throughout the city's cable system, and we rebroadcast these meetings in the evening of the day of the meetings as well. Fourth, you can use your telephone and call the following number, (213) 621-CITY, and it's called Council Phone, and you're able to listen, using your telephone, to Democracy in Action and your city council meetings. And then finally, through the internet, you can either watch live or archived footage of all of these council meetings at our city's homepage. That's www.lacity.org, and the clicks on the left-hand side, the links on the left-hand side will take you to live streaming webcasts of these council meetings and archived footage of all of our past council meetings as well. So there are five ways to veil yourself of your city council in action, and also at our city's homepage, you can find links to the city council agenda and all the materials that council members receive on all the items that are before us. You also can find committee meeting calendars. All items go to committees usually before they come here to city council, and our agendas are made available there for these meetings 72 hours in advance, 24 hours in advance for our special meetings. We also do have those agendas made available here for the public and posted throughout city buildings throughout the city. Thank you to council members Labonge and Rosendahl who have joined us. We are now at five members. There are 15 members of our body, and we require 2/3 of our body to begin business. 2/3 constitutes, or 10 members constitutes a quorum, and then we can begin our business. So we're still awaiting the following council members who are late. Council members Weesar, Caretz, Krikorian, Parks, and Reyes, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. Each Friday as well, we do some special presentations for individuals and organizations, notable dates and accomplishments and achievements throughout the city, everything from high school sports champions to folks who have made a difference in communities, notable celebrities and other people who have contributed to quality of life here in Los Angeles. We have six presentations this morning. We're going to be honoring Jerry's Flying Fox from Council District 10, Joe Diaz in Council District 14, Lilian Birkenheim is going to be honored by Council District 1, Bill Mason, and Big Sunday by Council Member Tom Labonge, and UCLA programs will be recognized by Council Member Paul Caretz. So as soon as we have a couple more council members, we can begin those presentations even before we have a full quorum, but just as a reminder, we are awaiting those members who are late. Council members Weesar, Caretz, Krikorian, and Reyes, if you'll please join us as soon as possible, so we can begin the meeting. In the meantime, thank you to the public for your patience while we wait those late council members, and hopefully we can get started very shortly. We'd like to welcome Dion O'Connell, who has arrived at 10:06. A few things passed on formal legality while he was gone, but we'll make sure those get reviewed. Council Member Reyes is here. Thank you to Council Member Reyes. And we're still awaiting Council Members Caretz, Krikorian, and Weesar. Are Mr. Labonge or Mr. Reyes ready for presentations? All right, we have Mr. Smith and Mr. Caretz. We're just awaiting Mr. Weesar and Mr. Krikorian. We are one member light for our quorum. We have Mr. Smith recorded. Mr. Englund, don't you worry. I think Mr. Labonge is ready for his presentation on Big Sunday, so Mr. Labonge, if you'd like to bring everybody forward, and like to recognize from the 4th Council District, Mr. Los Angeles,
I'd like all the council members to know how special the people behind me are, but I'd like David Levinson to come up here right now, who is truly a remarkable individual whom many of you met. Temple Israel is one of the oldest temples in the City of Los Angeles, has been on Hollywood Boulevard for many, many, many years. And a concept came together, come on up right here, you guys are too special. A concept came together, basically, to bring all faith together, all people who have care and concern and heart, and create a Big Sunday. A Big Sunday where you go out and make a difference in the lives of people. A Big Sunday where you do things that you'd never get around to do in a community effort, to try to help people change their lives, to work in the areas of, I want to use the term ecology, because probably that's an old term that we use about just the environment, to improve that environment so well. And I want to take a picture of these two camera people right here, grounded, which is so special. But before I remark on the three individuals who we're honoring, I'm just pulling them up here right now, because he's one of my heroes, as we all have, whatever districts that we represent, people who make a difference and who have a foundation of a concept and an idea that grows like an oak tree, that gets deep-rooted, that takes over and enlightens us all. Please welcome the founder of Big Sunday, a great Angelino, David Levinson.
Tom, thanks, thanks as always. Tom's one of our greatest supporters, and we're so indebted, so many of you are such great supporters of ours. I am not going to say anything, because this is a day for Sherri Marx and Randy Hutter and Charlie Hess. I get way too much of the credit for Big Sunday. These guys all work so hard doing so many things and have for so many years, so I'm going to turn it over to Tom to introduce them, but thank you all very much for having us here.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Give him a big hand for David Levinson right there. Now, every time you do something, you want to promote it in such a way, and every year, they come up with a different map, but this year, a different poster, different idea. This last year, it was so special, I hope it's for every, and every, for the future, because it had a great map of the city and it had a hand, and that was Big Sunday. And Randy, I know, Charlie, Charlie, I said it wrong, I'm moving too fast, Charlie.
Thank you.
Should borrow your glasses. Charlie, I want to thank you for being the creative force, for your enduring hard work, your dedication, and your soulfulness, which is so important. You designed this very special graphic that talked about the city and talked about Big Sunday. So on behalf of Mr. Garcetti and myself, we want to salute you, the whole city council, Charlie Hess, for being who you are and being big, real big on Big Sunday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations, good job right there.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and thank you to all the Big Sunday folks. Like to come forward and say a word, absolutely.
They're all going to say a word in just a second, but I want to introduce Randy Hutter, right here. We want to thank you for your Big Sunday director, for all the work that you've done, and it's special, because without people doing this, things don't get done. Without connecting people, think how many lives that you have changed. With a great seal in the City of Los Angeles, I want to congratulate and thank you for your work on that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Randy. Sherri Marx, okay, Sherri, I got it. The managing director of Big Sunday. Any community effort takes like an orchestra, a conductor, someone who makes it happen, and you've made it happen. It's very inspiring, and I know the mayor has partnered over the years with Big Sunday even to make it a larger day of service, so it's truly special. And I want to again salute you especially for your work and congratulate you for all of it. Sherri Marx, thank you very much. They just want to say thank you, so in three, say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Big Sunday's coming up when next year?
May 14th.
May 14th at 5:00.
And the website, if people want to go and get involved?
The website.
This is a moment of communication, so let people know.
Thank you. www.BigSunday, like the day, dot org.
Great job. All right, thank you, Big Sunday.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, David.
For all you do, and we encourage Angelinos to go to bigSunday.org, and we'll make sure that that gets up on our websites as well, coming up this May. Thank you. Mr. Labonge, you ready?
I just wanted, because I don't think you understood what I was saying.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Labonge.
Okay, this is the beautiful handprint that shows Big Sunday, and you see, that's the City of Los Angeles right there. That's all of us, and it started because these people care about others. Give everybody from Temple Israel and everybody from Big Sunday a big hand again. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Labonge, are you ready with your other presentation, or do you need a little more time for that? All right, I think we'll recognize Council Member Weesar. And while we're waiting that, please call the roll, we do have 10 members.
Alley Concardenist, Han, Weesar, Caretz, Krikorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rose Noel Smith, Weston Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of minutes.
All right, Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Smith seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Caretz moves, and Mr. Weesar seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. Why don't we run through the agenda just before our next presentation, if I can ask council members to please take their attention to the items that are before us and any items they'd like to call special on our agenda? If we can go to the first item, please.
First item on the agenda is a public convenience necessity item in Council District 5, notes for public hearing, and there is a request from the council office to continue that to January 21st, 2011.
Okay, we do have cards on that, but we have a request to continue that to the 21st. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll continue that. Next items, please.
Items 2 through 4, items for which public hearings have been held. There is an amending motion in the works on item 2. Do you wish to hold that?
Yes, please, let's hold that, please. Are there items to call special from those council members? 2, 3, and 4? Seeing none, let's, I'm sorry, which item was the commissioner?
There's not a commissioner, it's item 2, there's an amending motion in the works.
Oh, the amending motion, I'm sorry. We'll hold 2 for the amending motion, that leaves 3 and 4. Nobody wishes to call those special? Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next items, please.
Items 5 through 20, or items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
There's no objection for consideration, we'll have those before us. We have cards on 5 and on 20, we'll call those special. Close the public hearings on the others. Any specials, council members? If not, let's take up the balance, please, 6 through 19, and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. If we can go to continuation agenda, please.
Mr. President, there is no continuation, there's just the special meeting.
Okay, we'll wait for the time on that, and like to recognize in the meantime, Council
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm really excited to be standing here today with a resident of Boll Heights, someone who has made a huge difference in the lives of countless young people, and who has made a huge difference in his community, and I'm talking about neighborhood, I'm not sure if I could even call you activist, but you're a neighborhood homeboy who has done so much for our community, who has been committed, and I'm talking about Joe Diaz. Let's give him a big round of applause. As you can see, he is here with colleagues, with neighbors, with friends, with relatives, and I think they share in the excitement and joy that I have to present Joe Diaz with a very special recognition by the Los Angeles City Council, to thank him for his endless work and his numerous hours that he has spent of his own time to make sure that Boll Heights is a better place and to make sure that our young people have the opportunities they deserve to make something better of themselves and to also have those opportunities. Joe was born and raised in the Pico Aliso Housing Projects located in the community of Boll Heights. He graduated in 1990 from Roosevelt High School, where he proudly wore his treasured Rough Rider baseball jersey all four years of high school. Mr. Labonge is not in the chambers, but he would be proud to know that you wore your high school jersey very proudly as well. When Joe was 20 years old, he and five other Latino youth set out to engage in a Boll Heights image-enhancing project. The result was "We Live Here," Nosotros Vivimos Aquí, a mixed media exhibit which traveled throughout town, a project that eventually earned them a spot at the Midnight Special Bookstore and Cultural Center in Santa Monica. With funding from several community groups and the backing of Dolores Mission Church, the exhibit of photographs, videos, and text of interviews with neighborhood residents depicted everyday life in the projects, the joy, the heartache, and the tragedy, the many tragedies that have happened in the projects. Joe was deeply affected by gang life, growing up in an area that was heavily surrounded by 11 active gangs, yet he somehow managed to avoid getting immersed in that negative life, and instead did positive things, and now he continues to do them. His working credits includes Esperanza Community Housing, the Los Angeles Conservation Corps, and Homeboy Industries. In 2000, Joe was hired to work with the Los Angeles Youth Opportunity Movement, Boll Heights, as a youth development specialist. Joe has made a positive effort to contribute to his community by mentoring and guiding young people to better themselves and to stay out of trouble. It has become his personal goal to assist local youth suffering from domestic violence, substance abuse, gang-related problems, and educational stumbling blocks, and to guide them into the right path. Joe is the first person to volunteer for any task in any situation, and he is one of those people who quietly sits at events, doesn't look for recognition despite the fact that he probably did the most to make that event happen. And at this time, I want to present to Joe, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, a small gratitude, something that we want to just simply express ourselves as a city, as a community, for all the work you have done, and we know that you do it out of the love of your heart, we know that you expect nothing in return, but we certainly wanted to thank you, because of you, I know that a lot more young people have a better life today, and Boll Heights is a better place.
Just like to take a minute to thank Councilman Weesar on all his help that he's done for the Boll Heights community, City 14. For me, Weesar talked a little bit about what it was for me to grow up in housing development. Getting the opportunities to give back is what I got when I was a young man, young guy growing up in the housing projects. For me, I've had three mentors that really, really are my motivation, which was Father Greg Boyle, Bruce Seitzel from Alley Conservation Corps, and a old sergeant police officer from Holback Division. Those three guys sort of guide me, help me, what I needed with. Now, on my way over, I was thinking, when am I going to stay? And I'm like, I don't know what to say, but just to thank everyone...
But just to thank everyone who's here, on my way over, I drove with two of the most important women in my life. Without their help and my support, their support, I wouldn't do what I do for the community. My wife who says at the beginning of the day, just give me an extra hug, because I don't know what time you're coming home today. So my mom, who's always taught me, just do what you have to do, and my time is up, so thank you guys.
Don't worry, don't worry. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
That's for me.
Yeah, the councilmember took your time. We'll give you some extra, don't worry.
That was for me, in case I kept talking. I wouldn't fit it. But no, overall, just the city of LA, for me, is one of the best places to live. I have three daughters, one who's not here. She didn't want to miss school. The last time she missed school was in the third grade. She is a senior this year. At Oscar de la Hoya, my young one is sitting, standing to the right of my brother, and my young is behind me with my wife. But again, the city of LA is the greatest place to raise any kids. They say it's the worst, but I honestly believe it's not where you raise your kids, it's how you raise your kids. And I think with every councilmember that's in here, I thank you guys for doing the work that you guys do. Youth Opportunity Movement, where I come from, where I work from, where at, the greatest team, one of the greatest teams I have ever worked with. Homeboy Industry, who's behind me, a couple of guys from Homeboy who are behind me. There's nothing I could say more about Homeboy than you guys already know. My brother, my little brother. My staff didn't know I was a crybaby. But he's the guy that I go to the most. I may have three good mentors, but my little brother is my biggest mentor. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as you heard, there's a lot of emotion that comes from people growing up in a neighborhood such as Pico Aliso, that for many years has been a lot of despair, a lot of gang violence, a lot of lives lost. But because of people like Joe Diaz, like the people you see behind me here today, it's a very, very different neighborhood. City of LA and many others have invested in that community, but we have a lot more work to do. And what you're hearing today is a recognition of a very special individual that has done a lot to make sure that the despair has diminished, that mothers are no longer crying for their lost loved ones, and that there's more hope and opportunity, and that young people are being told today, you matter. No matter where you come from in this part of the city, you matter. You can do what you want. We are here to support you. So Joe Diaz, thank you very much for representing Boll Heights. Thank you very much for working on behalf of Boll Heights, and thank you for just being you. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation, Mr. Weezer, and thank you so much as well to Mr. Diaz for your great contributions. I'd like to recognize next, Councilmember Ed Reyes for our next presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you so much.
I know you do. Good morning, councilcolleagues. It's an emotional morning. A lot of good, golden hearts in the city. And I'm very, very honored to present to you a person who has one of the most noble hearts in the Community Development Agency. It's with a sad heart that I announce the retirement for Lillian Birkenheim-Silver. Today, I recognize and thank Lillian Birkenheim-Silver for her 34 years of outstanding service to the Community Redevelopment Agency and to the city of Los Angeles. Lillian began her city career as a community affairs specialist with the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city, advanced assistant project manager, was promoted to her current position of project manager of the Ford City Center, Central Business District amended, and Chinatown Project Areas. We're being very specific here.
Yeah, way too much.
Lillian's exceptional professionalism, collegiality, and energy has spurred revitalization in communities throughout Los Angeles, including Monterey Hills, North Hollywood, downtown LA, Crenshaw, the Merck Park, Chinatown, Laurel Canyon, and Pacoima. Where didn't you work? The guy covers everything.
The harbor.
Oh, the harbor, okay. Well, you got a few more years for that. I'm just kidding. Her visionary thinking, advocacy implementation, strategies with emphasis on place-making and broad-based community engagement has resulted in creative and long-term private-public partnerships that work to green, promote, preserve, revitalize, and the diverse ethnic communities within each of the project areas that she has served. In my experience, working with Lillian over the past seven years in Chinatown, she has proven to be a reliable, committed, and hard-working individual, always going above and beyond what is expected of her. And I can tell you, colleagues, there were nights that we spent, rather long nights we spent, working community meetings in Chinatown. It's only because she has this amazing amount of patience and absorbing all this energy when it comes to creative tension. But at times, there would be individuals who would perhaps lose their perspective when it comes to respect and how you speak to people, and she took the heat. You know, I consider ourselves public servants, but she was able to endure that hostility, that anger, and I dare say, some folks just woke up on the bad side of the bed and were just mean. And Lillian was able to take that on, smile, and say, I understand, but let's move forward. And that takes a very special person to do that, because she truly believes in the city, and her heart and soul displays that. She's accomplished so many different projects with the hard work of her team. And Lillian is essentially the head of a very talented pool of people, but she learned how to harness the talents of the whole range of perspectives and actually get things done. We had the Yale Terrace Affordable Housing Project, Blossom Plaza, which we just acquired a few weeks ago. The press should have done eight years ago, but that's another story. Chinatown Gateway, so you go through Broadway, you see this beautiful, two dragons vying for this beautiful pearl, an orb. It's filled with Chinese proverbs and legends that reinforces the great cultures of our city. Yale Street Housing Development, Yale and Orst Stairway and Park, which we just funded. We got funding through the state. So as you look up towards the northeast, instead of seeing a hill that's dilapidated and falling apart, you're going to see a beautiful walkway, the seniors, the children, the families. I don't know if Sharon Low will agree, they don't have to slip through the mud anymore to get up to their homes, but actually have a beautiful staircase. The Caesar Chavez Streetscape Improvement Project, the Link to Streetscape Improvement for Chinatown, the restructuring of the Community Advisory Committee for Chinatown, the Chinatown Cultural District Master Plan, the Chinatown Summer Nights, and I got to invite you on summers, it's beautiful, because you'll see the new neon lights, business incentive program. So all the beautiful structures will be lined with neon. Asian Pacific Island Preserve America Neighborhoods designation, which is a federal fund that now is connected to Chinatown. So Lillian genuinely cares about the people she works with, the community she serves, and it shows. Her extensive accomplishments and service have been of tremendous value, have resulted in advancement of the city's goals, providing safe, vibrant, walkable, green, livable communities and destinations for the people of Los Angeles. So Lillian, we have a lot of little awards here, big awards, some great wallpaper, and it'll be nice for you to stare at, share with your family. And I must thank your family for allowing them to share you with us. So, there's a lot of whereas, and I think I spent a good part of my six minutes touching on all of them. But Lillian, from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of all the people of Los Angeles, I want to say congratulations. Thank you for everything you've done, and your footprint is everywhere.
Thank you so much.
Congressmember Lucille Robert Allard, who would have loved to have been here, also very grateful in helping steward the federal resources that helped our light rail station, the goal line, elements, the improvements that were shepherded through the federal government. Thank you for your support. So this is on Herbie app. It says, "An honor and appreciation of your many years of exemplary leadership and outstanding commitment to improving quality of life for the residents of Los Angeles. 10th day of December 2010, Lucille Robert Allard, Member of Congress, the 34th District, certificate of congressional recognition." Thank you.
Thank you.
This is probably the most valuable one. This comes from your colleagues, your staff. This is a live, real acknowledgement of your great work. Thank you so much. I was asking for the paint tickets, I'll let the staff decide that.
Thank you so much. It has been my privilege to work in this diverse city and amazing neighborhoods with the caring community members, dedicated councilpeople who go beyond the call of anybody's duty nobody can even imagine, and dedicated CRA and city staff. Our successes throughout the years have been great, when there have been collaboration between the city departments and agencies. Today, we're opening an amazing new facility in Central City East, the Downtown Women's Center, that happened only because the city cared, and Councilwoman Jan Perry and Kathy Godfrey pulled together the city departments to obtain the building, the funding, and all the necessary permits. Next week, we'll be breaking ground on a new affordable, large-family housing project in Chinatown. Another project that would not happen without the leadership of Councilman Reyes, his staff, Susan Wong, and all the city departments. When the Downtown Street Standards Committee was created by the council to redefine downtown streets and urban design, allowing for infill housing and pedestrian priority streets, we took giant steps forward for the city. Because of the collaboration between Simon Pastucha and Emily Gabel for city planning, Jay Kim and Tomas Carranza, and Chris Hy from LADOT, Clark Robbins and Lynn Paco from BOE, Greg Fisher from CD9, Karen Yamamoto from CRA, and our ever-diligent consultants, Pat Smith and Alan Rifkin. Collaboration has been a key word, with the support and guidance of Councilman Reyes and Sharon Low brought together the Asian Pacific and Island communities to obtain Preserve America designation for the city of Los Angeles's Chinatown, Little Tokyo, Koreatown, Tai Town, Historic Filipino Town. The collaboration is continuing and will strengthen the cultural richness of the city as well as the economic viability of our communities. Every day that I have had the privilege of working in the communities of Los Angeles, I've relied on the amazing fellow staff members. Several behind me. Amazing city staff, and of course, nothing could be possible without my husband's and family's constant support. Thank you. It's been a very big privilege just to work in the city of LA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson. And thank you, Lillian. Actually, before you leave, Mr. Weezer would like to say something, and then Mr. Labange, Mr. Weezer?
Great. Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Lillian, we're going to miss you, certainly in downtown. You have been a godsend to a lot of the work that is happening in downtown and its revitalization. You know, after we started our Bringing Back Broadway initiative, you have been there 110% all the time, whether when we asked you to be on panels, or finding resources for different projects, or getting creative about how we move forward. And a lot of times, when people really didn't understand what we were trying to do there, you had the history, the knowledge, and enthusiasm to get folks understanding the importance of preserving our history in the city, and to look again at some of these areas of our city that have been neglected for decades. But thank you so, so much, from the bottom of my heart. You have just been a tremendous asset to us. I wish you would stay with us longer, so that you could see the fruits of some of the work we've been doing there. But then again, there's a lot of fruits that have sprouted throughout the city of LA because of the work you've done. We're going to miss you, Lillian, and good luck, and thank you for all the work you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
We were out of the room at the start and jumping back and forth, but Lillian, you looked fabulous, like you just got off the plane from Hawaii, which is so nice. But you've been so nice to every effort that you've tried to make to help the city, and to know what you're being honored, and what Mr. Reyes said about you personally in previous years, you were working in the North Hollywood area. I just wanted to stand up along with Rene Weiser to say, thank you very much, and congratulations on the very, very successful future for all your endeavors. Thank you, Lillian.
Our next presentation will be from Councilmember Tom Labange, for our second presentation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kokory, if you'd like to join me, or give regards, or whatever you would like to do, it'd be fine. I know it's a great effort here. We have the team. We go from Lillian Birkenheim to Bill Mason, who started in December 1976 as a planning assistant in the Community Redevelopment Agency, and promoted to a planning associate, and promotion, and promotion, and promotion, because he cared, and he worked hard, he wanted to make a difference. Throughout his career, he has handled over 34 years of service, has been the lead planner in nine areas, including Pico Union, Chinatown, Normandy, Adams, Normandy, Mid-City, Western Slosses, District Six and Seven, as well as in North Hollywood. And it's in North Hollywood we became very close to working with Bill for the past 11 years. His excellent knowledge and dedication to the area has stimulated great impact, where the Community Redevelopment Agency has made a difference. And I wanted to join with Paul Kokory today to salute Bill for his over 35 years of service, and also ask that my deputy, Alice Roth, who's worked very closely to join us here at the center table, because Bill has been so instrumental in working with Alice and the whole team of people, which really is nice. So I'm going to call on Mr. Kokory for a few remarks, is before we salute you. I think the big thing is, is that you, which was the largest redevelopment agency in the country when first created by then-Councilman Joel Wax, and then the subway came, and nothing is really happening. And all of a sudden, with others, and Margaritas here, and your team of folks, all of a sudden things started happening. And I do want to thank another J.H. Snyder Company, which I think was the catalyst for an awful lot of good that started there. We finally moved Phil's Diners, which is you made happen. So when it finally gets open, I'm going to buy you, get you the first Philadelphia cheesesteak.
All right.
Yeah, that's good. But you have made a difference. And I hope, when I saw Lillian too, the difference she made, all of you make, hopefully in your retirement, in the future, you go back and tell your family what a big difference you made for the community. Bill, I'm going to ask Mr. Kokory to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And Bill, congratulations on a great career, and best wishes...
And Bill, congratulations on a great career and best wishes on your retirement. You know, I grew up in the Valley, and my grandmother lived in North Hollywood, and so I've seen North Hollywood go through tremendous changes. And in the last dozen or so years, there's really been a renaissance in that area, and it's been, you know, through the efforts of this city, through Councilmember Labange's leadership, through the work of the CRA and people like you, that we've really been able to take a neighborhood and turn it around. And that's, I think, a lasting legacy that you'll leave behind. And my offices work in that area with the CRA and the Business Assistance Program, and the facade improvements that we're doing will really be a part of the continuing economic resurgence that's creating jobs and putting people back to work. And I just want to let you know how much we appreciate all your efforts and wish you all the best.
Thank you very much. And Paul, thank you very much. I know when you mentioned about your grandmother and everybody, 1969, I was going to West Valley Occupation, and I got a job at Wise Pining in Van Nuys, and he took me down Langasham. And this is the main drag of the Valley, and all the, what was the thriving furniture stores and all the activity, but then the challenge and the change, and then you, of a long haul. The CRA has made a difference, and it's because people like Bill Mason. So, Bill, on behalf of all the members of the council, Mr. Kocorian and myself, we join here in saluting Bill Mason for his 34 years of great service to Los Angeles. Thank you very much. We'll lift over here first.
And Mr. Corretts would like to add his good wishes as well. Mr. Corretts.
I'm over here first. Yeah, I think this is kind of funny because I actually signed the commendation, didn't look at it, and then realized it was for somebody who I have known for many, many years, a good, close family friend. And my wife, Gail, who worked for Joel Wax, you know, watched from closer up the good work that he had done in North Hollywood. And I have to say, between him and his wife, Pam, who I know couldn't make it here because of work commitments, they have done more things that have positive impact on the community than, many couples that I can think of, there are very few. Pam is the director of Math for America in Los Angeles that trains math teachers, which is a desperate need, and raises the money to do that. And Bill has had a tremendous impact with all of his good years of exceptional planning for the city of Los Angeles. So I just wanted to commend you, and this is a pleasant surprise to me, although sorry to hear that you're retiring, but we thank you for all your great work and your friendship as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. And Mr. Reyes, I think wants to add his good wishes too.
Yes, I just want to say thank you, Bill. Bill and I worked together in the early 90s, and we were taking on a pretty tough area in Pico Union, and we worked on some fascinating projects. The one that stands out the most, we actually had the audacity of designing a housing facility that you probably would have found in Orange County, right in Pico Union. It had separate garages, their own driveway, a beautiful lawn in the front, and we structured it so they can eventually become homeowners. And it was right in an area that no one would ever imagine a facility like that should be built. With Bill's stewardship and the team back then, you made it happen. Today, I still have families thanking us, and I always mention the CRA family for helping us in that endeavor, and Bill, you're a big part of that. So you've left profound impressions on many, many families and children on that alone. It's like, imagine what you've done from that point on. So thank you so much, and we're going to miss you.
Well, I'd like to thank Councilman Labange and Councilman Kocorian for the kind words, as well as Councilman Corretts and Councilman Reyes. And thank you very much for this opportunity. I've just really enjoyed and just been energized, you know, for the last thirty-some years of working for the city of Los Angeles and working in the redevelopment agency. I think that, you know, we all, when we're working in something bigger than us, you know, we're working a continuum in a slice of time, and I can't help at this point to think about the work that I did that built on the work of others that came before me, and that I'm leaving, and the work's going to continue in the good hands of the people that will come after me. And I think North Hollywood is in very good hands. And so I would like to thank Councilman Labange and his staff, Renee Weiser, Alice Roth, that I've worked with for many years, Doug Mensman, and Lisa, thank you very much, this was great, she can really move mountains, I've got to tell you, that's fantastic. And then I'd also like to thank the CRA team, the East Valley team, that has been sort of my city family for the last 10 years. Margarita de Escondrius, our regional administrator, who has made the East Valley region a great place to work. She's empowered us to do good work, and I'm very appreciative of that. Because Al Prizzata, who is away, and the project manager for North Hollywood specifically, Duran, and Al are other project managers. I'd also like to thank and recognize Regina Kirshenbaum, the Assistant Project Manager that I work with, almost daily, also Elizabeth Andorra, Betty, Stephen John, and Tabitha on our team. And then I'd also like to thank my family, because I think it begins and ends with family, and they're scattered all over the place. My son is finishing up the semester at S.C., so he couldn't be here today. My wife is working, and my son Josh is in Philadelphia working. So this is great, I'm very thankful, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, Mr. Kocorian, and our last presentation will be by Councilmember Corretts of the 5th District for our last presentation.
During this holiday season, many of us are fortunate enough to celebrate with our families and friends. We go to holiday parties, and we shop, and hopefully we shop in Los Angeles, and of course, we eat. Holiday feasts are a tradition for many of us, but these simple things are often things we take for granted and are not possible for too many Angelinos. The economic difficulties over the past few years have increased the numbers of the hungry and homeless in our cities and our communities. And our colleague Jose Weezer has been an incredible leader in trying to get the city to do its part to tackle the problem of hunger in all of Los Angeles, and I've been proud to support and aid those efforts. But it's also important to recognize those who are working in their local communities to help those in need, and that's why I'm proud to honor two fellow Bruins who exemplify the spirit and community service that UCLA strives to instill in its student body. And if they could both come up. Abdallah Jadallah coordinates the UCLA Food Closet. The Food Closet fulfills an often unspoken and unknown and hidden need on a campus where some students struggle to find their next meal, and nobody really knows that outside the campus. By using a small, previously unused closet in the Student Activity Center as a pantry stocked with food donated by the community, students can anonymously take food that they need to help them through what may be a difficult time in their lives. And Brian Poszewski is the coordinator of the Swipes for the Homeless program at UCLA, which was established last fall. Swipes for the Homeless works by allowing students who have purchased the college meal plan to donate unused swipes or meals at the end of each academic quarter. These donated meals are then taken to local homeless shelters throughout the city. Additionally, Swipes for the Homeless educates students on campus about what they can do about homelessness and the hunger problem in Los Angeles, and how they could do more to help. And they also have a subset program, which is very similar to a program we just started in Los Angeles, to identify waste food on campus and to get that to the homeless as well. We just passed a similar program just a few days ago, and we're just a little bit behind the curve. You guys have actually set the example for the rest of the city. And not only do they coordinate these programs, they started up these programs from scratch, which is just amazing to me. It's a sad thing that we actually have some homeless students on campus at UCLA, but at the same time, it's great that we're providing food for them and enabling them to help finish their time at UCLA. So we thank you all for what you've done so far. We know that you'll both go on to careers that use your creativity and compassion, and I'd like to give you a moment to say a couple words.
So I want to thank Councilman Paul Corretts for bringing us here today, and to all the UCLA students and staff and faculty that have helped put these programs together to help students and other individuals throughout Los Angeles. Likewise, I want to thank all the UCLA faculty and staff that have helped out the Food Closet, and Councilmember Paul Corretts, he's helped us out a lot and gave us a lot of moral support. So thank you.
So let's give a big hand to these two gentlemen who have created amazing programs from scratch. A great example to the rest of the city.
And Mr. Weezer would like to add his congratulations to. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Mr. Corretts, thank you for bringing these two young individuals to chambers today. Congratulations and thank you for your incredible altruism. As Mr. Corretts mentioned, the city recently passed a policy on what our department should do with our surplus food, and you have already been doing it at UCLA, and that's what we want to do. We hope that the city, and now UCLA, and others show the way in terms of providing food to those who need it. We want to eventually think of donating surplus food as the way we think about recycling right now. At first, it was a little uncomfortable. At first, we said, we don't want to go out of our way to do it, but now we see the benefits, there's infrastructure available to do that, it's a lot easier. There's education and information out there about how we can do more recycling, so hopefully we could donate more surplus food in the future. But you guys have done an incredible job. I'm proud to call you guys fellow Bruins. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That will close our presentations for today. If we can go to the items called special, do we have the amending motion for item two?
Yes, Mr. President, that has been circulated.
Okay, if nobody wishes to be heard on that, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment. If we can open the roll on item two as amended, please. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Great. We'll now go to our general public comment, and our first speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams. I want to thank all the students that are here too. We'll make sure we find out what school everybody's from so we can give you guys a shout-out as well.
Could we have the students stand up and we can applaud for them, maybe? Okay, since my clock is running. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. Yesterday, there was a kind of interesting, entertaining meeting over in the MTA building. The Board of MTA considered a motion, what to do, just to give us a number, a cost-benefit analysis of one of the largest projects ever to come to L.A. Maybe. That is the 710 North Extension Tunnel Project. Mr. Weezer supported Mr. Najarian of Glendale in a simple question. Please tell us what this monster is, because in some places, they say there's going to be an interchange at Huntington Drive. In other areas, they didn't say, no, it's not. In some areas, they say it's going to have trucks. In some areas, they say it's not. We don't know what this monster is, but they're proceeding with a $60 million to $90 million environmental process without even knowing where it's going to go, without reflecting the wishes of the L.A. City Council and the nine affected neighborhood councils. We don't know what it is, and a simple question was, please tell us what this monster is. And by the way, somebody else recommended that it be applied to all MTA projects. That was an interesting concept because they don't know what the real, or at least current estimated costs, schedules, and scopes are for many other projects. On the other side, Sierra Club supports the 3010 Elements of Transit, but not the highway program that's being accelerated.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange for a recognition of our students in the audience.
Well, thank you very much. We have some great students here today, all students here today. Hold on, sir, conductor, do you want to introduce them? Just wait just a second so we get it for them. Please have our great students from Van Ness Avenue Elementary School be raised and recognized. Van Ness Avenue School located in the Hollywood area and right next to Paramount Pictures, and they have a great bunch of kids. Wave to the camera, everybody. Thanks for being here, this is your city hall.
We love you, Van Ness.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you.
If you have cable at home, that's Channel 35 tonight at 8 o'clock. Our next speaker is Arnold Sachs, and after that will be Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, Arnold Sachs. It's very interesting, I'd like to take a moment to also congratulate all the volunteers that you awarded, and you gave recognition to, you gave awards out as proclamations. But there's a group of volunteers who work at the airport, travelers' aid, that is going to be discontinued because, A, according to what was said at the Airport Commission meetings and written in the newspaper, they have a $400,000 contract, volunteers having a contract with the city, and B, it's more economical if city employees run the program. So just trying to figure out when the volunteers cost the city money and when the volunteers save the city money. Also like to point out that we're in the middle of December, as everybody knows, and we have no ending or no decision made on the parking garage situation that was a dire part of the budget process from last year. Believe it was going to add an extra $60 million to the general fund program. It was costing, going to cost, right now, the city is spending $5 million a month. So where is the leadership? Today's newspaper says the mayor is upset with the teachers' unions. Where is the leadership? And where is all the progress that was made from the budget discussions? When does that come up? The 700 people that were supposed to be laid off, on and on and on.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Melrose Larry Green will be our next speaker. After that will be Brian Chase. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. First of all, I'm very happy this morning. I want to thank two people, Sharon Shapiro, the Field Deputy for Tom Labange, and Councilman Labange. I'm not being evicted from my apartment, and thank you, Councilman Zion. This is an amazing case. I don't have to rehash all the details, but I was told by a lot of lawyers that I might have been evicted. I didn't want to give up my cat, I didn't want to give up my piano. Legally, they were right, and I want to thank Dr. Finkelstein, my landlord, Dwayne Hall, Dr. Finkelstein's lawyer. But most of all, I want to thank Tom Labange and Sharon Shapiro. They really went to bat for me. They took me down to the Housing Department, I filed- They took me down to the Housing Department, I filed a complaint, and the wrath of that summons, the lawyer and the landlord agreed, and listen to this, not only are they not evicting me, but they're putting in new carpeting, they're painting the apartment, putting in new linoleum, the cat stays, the piano stays. I'm probably not supposed to say this, but I have a lot of room in my apartment for Tom Labange's lawn signs, and I'm so proud to live in Hancock Park, I'm so proud to be a resident of the 4th District. Good morning, there's my good friend Jimmy Blackman, who once gave me a tour of Mayor Vioros's inner sanctum, when he wasn't supposed to, but he's a great guy. I love the mayor, I love everybody this morning, even love President Obama. I love everybody. I have never been so happy since the day that I got into Brandeis and Cornell University. Bill Rosendahl, we go back to the days of Century Cable, a personal friend of the great Al O'Guthrie, Bill Rosendahl. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Sharon, thank you, Tom. Jose Weezer, I'm on board with you. I got to wrap up more boxes, I got to go to Office Depot, Home Depot. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, very glad for you, and have a good, good holiday and a happy new year. Larry. Brian Chase is our next speaker. After that is Mickey Jackson. Very good morning.
Thank you very much, good morning, and just very quickly, I want to thank Councilmembers Rosendahl, Reyes, Gossetti, and Coretz for advancing a motion to investigate the possibility of protecting workers in the adult film industry from the spread of disease. I spent the last 15 minutes trying to think of what euphemism I was going to use for adult films with all the kids in the room, but I'm really grateful. Just last week, I met two young people, sweetest people in the world, just 24 years old each, both of whom were infected with sexually transmitted diseases that they will have for the rest of their lives due to participation in this industry, and I'm so happy to see some movement forward to protecting people like them. Thank you.
Mickey Jackson, after that will be--
I'm just going to come in here on Brian's time and make this real short. Thank you so much, particularly Councilman Rosendahl. You've been a good friend for many years, and your concern about these people is very touching, and I know, you know, it comes from a very deep, personal place, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mickey. Bill Hooey will be the next speaker. After that is Walter Bechtel.
Good morning, members of the LA City Council, I'm Bill Hooey. Usually, I'm here speaking on landlord issues, but my second full-time career is I do publicity for movie premieres, and there's a movie premiere in Hollywood on Tuesday at the Gypsy Theater about, it's called "What is the Electric Car?" Now, the producers of this film shows the city of LA to launch the movie and raise awareness about electric cars. Also, Chevrolet and Nissan are launching their new electric car the following day, and those cars will be on the sidewalk, right there at the Gypsy Theater in Hollywood. We're going to have a lot of media, a lot of celebrities, Jay Leno's in the film. If any of the council people want to come out and talk to the media, because, look, right now in LA, we're losing jobs, Hollywood, half of Hollywood's left since 1996, and now we got a movie company and car companies that are using Hollywood Boulevard, the Gypsy Theater, as a platform to start the movement, to raise consciousness across America about the electric car, and, you know, less pollute the earth less. So, this is great that they're choosing LA. Our image needs it, LA's the city of progressive thinkers most of the time, and it's a good thing, so if anyone on the city council, and it's too bad Councilman Labange's not there because he's a big promoter of LA, if you want to come down, talk to the press, I got the information about the film here, my contact number, my email address is billhooey, H-O-O-E-Y, at earthlink.net. I'm also at the fairhousingcoalition.com. But this is a great thing, I mean, we're going to change the consciousness of America about driving electric cars, and a lot of electric cars are going to be there, several companies are going to have a little giveaway of electric car, it's going to be promoted aggressively on the internet, and I think this is good for the city of LA, it's good for Hollywood, it's a win-win, nobody's walking away angry. So, if you want to come down, talk to the press, tell them what you think about the future of electric cars, alternative energy, this could be a good place to do so. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question? That documentary you talked about, is that the one where Art Garciotti came out on a mock funeral of the electric car? Did you see that one?
Okay, I haven't seen them, I've been so busy promoting it, I haven't seen the movie yet.
Yes, Mr. Weezer, there's a bit.
It's called "What is the Electric Car?", we expect Jay Leno there, Ed Begley Jr., and a host of others, so it's a really good, you know, movement, moment for LA.
I'm sure Mr. Garciotti's interested in that.
Thank you very much. Eleven-year electric car driver.
Can I get us to the sergeant?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Hooey. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker.
It's a car bus, you know.
Thank you, absolutely. And Glenn Bailey will follow Mr. Bechtel. Thank you.
Good morning, I think it still is, it's nice to hear somebody wasn't evicted after 21 years, but sad to say it's not the way it is for every one of us. Maybe it's because of the council district I live in, I don't know. But I wanted to say something, somebody has reacted on TV to something I said here, Oprah Wimpy, and I just wanted to say something, and thank you for responding, if somebody's out there and not stonewalling me and everything I have to say. But I just wanted to say, you know, if you cry and you don't know why you cry, don't tell them, you know, that for the reason I noticed. You know, I was watching a movie the other day, a couple of weeks ago, Titanic, and for some reason, I was brought to tears about a certain part of that movie, and I couldn't understand why myself until later on, I realized what the meaning was. So, but I guess that's all I wanted to say. Again, I was really shocked that some people are getting some justice in some parts of the council districts when they're being evicted after 21 years or however much time, but in other parts of the city, we're not getting justice. I wish that there would be equal justice, but apparently, that doesn't, that's not the way things are. We're still permanently relocated from our hotel, and none of us have been guaranteed, our rents are not guaranteed past the relocation amount of money we were given, and so we're going to be having a lot of trouble here very soon, as soon as our relocation money runs out.
Bailey is our next speaker. After Mr. Bailey is Jack Humperville.
My name is Glenn Bailey, I'm speaking from the Friends of the Spalva de Basin, but I'm actually speaking about a citywide issue. It has to do with the fee increase for community garden plots. There's nine community gardens that are controlled by Department of Recreation and Parks, either on city land or land that's leased to the city. And at the commission meeting on July 14th, they increased the fees 380% for individual community garden plots. They did so amongst a 71-page document with various other fee increases, with no notice whatsoever to the community garden organizations or to the individual community gardens. To make matters worse, they failed to notify the community gardeners, to this date officially, that this increase would be effective January 1. When some gardeners found out about it, they attended the commission meeting on November 15th, and several of the commissioners said they didn't know anything about the increase, even though they had voted amongst this 71-page fee increase document. At a community meeting on November 23rd, 130 gardeners showed up, very angry about this failed process, and there was television and newspaper coverage, and yet the Board of Recreation Parks Commission failed to even put this on their agenda that they had this past Wednesday. They have indicated they will do so on January 5, four days after the fee increase is supposed to go into effect. This department is out of control, arrogant, and needs to be made accountable to how they're treating the most vulnerable of our people, in terms of seniors and low-income people, they're just trying to grow food and improve the garden plots that they are using in the city, and I hope you'll help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for brief response.
Very much, I will ask you, gentlemen, we're going to take this up in our Arts and Parks Committee at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and briefly, Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to respond by one line, I totally agree with this. My community is up in arms about these gardens, and I want to make sure that it supports the people in the communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, you are on the base, and Wayne Spindler is on deck. Go ahead.
Good morning, my name's Jack Humperville, I'm with the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council, and I'm the Chair of the DWP Committee. I'm a contributor to City Watch. It appears that the city council is not going to override the mayor's veto of the ballot measure to allow the council to remove the general manager or the commissioners with a 2/3 vote. I gather the mayor was working overtime yesterday, pounding on a number of you people. I might also say that a number of us are exceptionally disappointed about the emasculation of the ratepayers advocate, especially after all the positive feedback we received during the meetings all around town. But I guess you caved to the pressure of the IBEW, who are concerned about the increased transparency and sunlight that would be cast upon the relationship with the DWP. However, I think you have an excellent opportunity to exercise your charter-given rights in picking the next commissioner for the DWP. As you know, Lee Albert has resigned after three years, and therefore, the mayor's going to appoint somebody. I sure hope you guys are going to do a thorough job of vetting of the qualifications of this next commissioner before approving them, not like the last guy that came through for the airport, where, you know, you had a meeting in the morning, and then he was approved about 15 minutes later. I would also like to thank what I call the seven people on the council who I think did an excellent job with the ratepayers. Jan Perry is one, Greg Smith, Bernie Parks, PK2, as I call him, Mr. Kerkorian, Mr. Coretz, Tony Cardus, thank you very much for standing up for us in time, and also who got the most improved award, my friend Bill Rosendahl. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wayne Spindler is our last speaker for general public comment.
Well, a good thing happened, the day of Lee Cannon Albert is over, the reign of terror is finally over with, the one-man committees, of which he had six or seven of them, which he called them committees, but when you look on the website, he was the only one on the committee, and he was the Chair of the committee. Now, since that happened, we also hear that somebody was given $50,000 to give a verbal report to the mayor that S., whatever his name was, that was the head of the utility, and then the other one was H., David Mahi, they all have these initials, and both of them were having problems mentally dealing with managing the DWP, to such a point that the mayor had to give $50,000 to find out why these two gentlemen can't get along with each other. You don't need $50,000 for that. I'll give you the verbal report right now, it's because you've got a green program that you can't meet, and you're taking all this money in on these rate increases, and you're going to allocate them to a green program to build infrastructure that will not be able to sustain what you claim it's going to sustain. And now, he wants to make it 40%. It's going to be 20% green, now it's going to be 40% green, and they can't do it. So, you have two choices. You can cancel the green program and give an immediate categorical 20% reduction in rates across the board to businesses and homeowners, and restore our economy, or you can keep going with your rate increases, keep driving the businesses out, and what are you going to have in the end? Like in Don Quixote, you're going to have a bunch of windmills, that's what you're going to be looking at with no power generation. So, we need a rate cut, and we need an elimination of this green phony program. Thank you.
Thank you. That will close our general public comment. If we can go now to items called special, we have item five called Special for Cards, and Arnold Sacks is our first speaker, he'll be followed by Wayne Spindler.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Very simple item, actually, on the agenda, but when you read it, there's something in it. It says, "Relative to the status of the Joint Use Agreement citywide and within the northeast San Fernando Valley, and current programs offered at Los Angeles Unified School District sites in each council district." So, why differentiate between the northeast valley, San Fernando Valley, and current sites in each council district? Why not make the communication current sites in each council district alone? That way, it's not two items on one agenda, number one. Number two, these programs offered at LAUSD sites in each council district. I believe LAUSD came up with an idea of charging fees for groups to use school sites for their programs. So, I'm wondering, because in today's Daily Breeze, settlement to prohibit school fees, that school districts can't enact fees for students because it, according to the article, the ACLU said it will, by doing this, this agreement means all students have an equal opportunity to achieve their dreams irrespective of their family's financial circumstances. So, any fees enacted by the LAUSD, I'm wondering if they're legal for programs being held on LAUSD sites within each of your regions? And again, you have the Prop 26 that was just passed, so I wonder how that would play into these fees for any LAUSD programs.
Thank you. That matter is now before us, colleagues. Wayne Spindler, number five, Wayne Spindler. Clerk had the card.
All right. LAUSD, the five initials of failure. And now, we have the, something about joint use agreements. What are these agreements exactly? What do they do? They just say that we're going to have some sort of a report, so so far, no money has been expended yet in terms of how much the special consultants are going to be paid, how much overtime the consultants are going to be paid, how much it's going to cost for the consultants to prepare the report, because that's what happens here in all of this, is that after these things happen, you need experts. Experts are people who get hired by the city at exorbitant rates, and they get charged to all of us, and then they, like the mental report by the psychiatrist of the Mirror about Mr. Freeman. So, why do we, what are these joint use agreements, and why just within the northeast San Fernando Valley, which is comprising CD7, CD6? And we have somebody who represents CD7, and maybe he should comment about exactly why do we need to focus just on the northeast San Fernando Valley? The LAUSD has its own budget. Why is the city government itself involving itself in that issue? Because the mayor tried to take over schools from the LAUSD, and apparently, that wasn't a successful venture. The city of Los Angeles needs to stay out of the affairs of the LAUSD. The LAUSD needs to start educating and graduating people at a higher rate than 30%. So, this should be voted down, and a resounding no in the involvement of the city with the LAUSD. That should be what should happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That matter is before us, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 20, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sacks, number 20, Arnold Sacks.
Item number 20, and I'm just going to read from the beginning, "Final maps in the various council districts recommended for council action. Approve the final maps and adopt the city engineer reports as detailed in the various list of council files, including bonds, agreements, contracts, and other related issues as specified." So, regarding the maps, you may have come up for air out of the hole you usually have your head stuck in, and heard about the pipeline that exploded in the vicinity of San Francisco, in the suburb, and the fact that the people living in the neighborhood had no idea that there was a high, high-velocity gas line running right down the center of the street within their neighborhood. So, these track maps that you approved for these--
So these track maps that you approve for these developments, is that information forthcoming to the people in the area? Is that information that is included in any of these track maps? Do you think the public that lives within the area should know about those kinds of gas pipelines? I mean, you could have a situation like what occurred at the farmer's market back in the mid-'80s with the methane gas leak. So again, are those maps also included because, as other related issues as specified? Or the public who lives in that area, who will be impacted by these developments, they have no idea, or maybe even move into some of these new developments, they have no idea about those kinds of, like oil pipeline map, the run-through of gas?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. The matter, colleagues, is now before us for a vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that does take care of the items on the regular agenda. Do you wish to recess the regular and go into the special?
Yes, please.
Alakon, Cardus, Horn, Weiser, Keretz, Kerkorian, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, West, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present and in quorum. Mr. President.
All right.
First item, item 21 is the mayor's veto message. 10 votes are required to override.
We have a couple speakers on this matter. Two in particular. Wayne Spindler.
So we got a veto, and now the city council, for the first time in 50 years, is going to try to override a veto by the mayor. That's pretty bad, because usually everything is 15 to nothing, 12 to nothing, and this time we have a legitimate dispute, and what is the veto message? Well, the message is, is that we're having a special election, March the 8th, and should the city council, you guys, should you be able to fire, a nice word is called remove, of commissioners or, and the general manager, yes or no? Well, the answer is, according to the union IBW god, Brian Darcy, he says that the utility's too politicized. The Lord says that it's too politicized. So what the Lord means is that he doesn't want this on the ballot. That's what God said. So, believe me, Darcy's like God, because he's got the total control of everything. So, do you really have 10 votes here to overturn this? Of course you don't have 10 votes, and you don't have a full quorum of 15 here. You wouldn't go against the mayor. You wouldn't actually put this before the voters to decide. Of course not, because that would give people the right to vote, and in the city of Los Angeles, we don't have the right to vote. We have the right to get a bill with a bunch of taxes and fees that we don't need, and the only thing we can do is pay it, or they shut our water and power off. So that's why I'm going to support the mayor's veto, and urge you to vote, to uphold it, and keep this off the ballot, so we can just keep on being one big happy LA city family. Thank you very much.
Arnold Sachs. Ms. Perry after, Mr. Sachs.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Arnold Sachs. I believe an earlier speaker mentioned something about the vanilla ballots measures that have been put on for the general election, and he's absolutely right. In a weird sense, I support the mayor vetoing this. His actions, he claimed, shouldn't just be regarding the water and power department. It should be all commissioners, and why wasn't that put on the ballot with that kind of language? The airport commissioners, the harbor commissioners, they should also be included, all the proprietary departments. Let me give you a great example, back at the airport. The head of the airport commission, Alan Nozenberg, Roffenberg, is going to resign for a conflict of interest because he owns stock in Host International, which is up through the bids for providing food at the terminals. But he's been sitting on the board for over five years. Now, did he own the stock for all the time that he was sitting on the board? Yes. So why wasn't it a conflict of interest then? Why didn't the city council act then? They could have said to the mayor, why didn't anybody act then? Why didn't the mayor say, you know what? I can't appoint you unless you get rid of your stock. Didn't happen. City council didn't say, you know, you shouldn't sit on the board unless you get rid of your stock. That didn't happen. So, the last speaker was also right, because the public is going to pay one way or the other. In a moment that still should stand out in history, last month, there was a commissioner who wasn't approved because the process hadn't been vetted. Unbelievable, you actually moved.
Council member Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and in the interest of being diplomatic, I want to say good morning, Brian. Good morning. And let's give him a hand. Friend of most. We need to talk about this, we need to talk about it in public. By my rough count, and this is my very rough count, we have eight votes to overturn the veto. You need 10, so we are too short. I guess we're going to have to continue this and keep going and see what happens, and talk to our friends who want to sustain the veto, and maintain our friends who are willing to override the veto. But this is the message that I hope that we are sending. As I said the other day, when the 10 people voted, 10 people voted to move this forward to the mayor, that I had hoped that they voted to do this because they believed in the entire package, and I also hoped that they didn't vote affirmatively so that they could be on the prevailing side to assist in sustaining the veto down the road. Basically, what I'm saying is, I hope it wasn't some sort of strategic move rather than a move of belief that this was a package that should be put forward to the voters. So, just so we're really clear, by my rough count, and this is a rough count, I think we have eight votes today. So we're two votes short. The matter's going to have to get continued, and I think we hopefully can continue to talk to our colleagues on the council, who are free and independent, and can, free and independent, Brian, to talk about this and be open to this. But I want to ask you one thing. Mr. Smith and I put in that motion about looking at all the other proprietary departments. That was never done with the intention of throwing this into that pile, because, let's be real with each other, that's not going to happen anytime soon. So anybody who says that as some form of logic is blowing smoke. You know darn well, that's not going to be done within a reasonable period of time, a year's time. We're going to have to convene a commission and select people, so don't pretend. People have to pay their Department of Water and Power bills every other month. They don't pay LAX, they don't pay the harbor department, they pay the Department of Water and Power. So don't hide behind that motion that we introduced as a way of saying, this is why you want to delay it. If you want to delay it, say, I just don't like it, I'm never going to vote for it, and I don't want the voters to have the chance to vote on it. Just say that, be honest, be direct, be forthright, and then call it a day, and if we never get to 10 votes, we never get to 10 votes, okay? But I wanted to say that today, and we're going to have to continue it. Okay, I guess it's been recommended to me to move to a day certain. I would like to check and see when we have maximum attendance. I don't want to keep doing this dance if we're never going to get the votes. I'd like to move to a day when everybody is present. Mr. Clerk, if you can tell me when that is.
Before recess, there is at least one excuse, actually Wednesday is the best day possible. There's no one excused entirely. There are four members either leaving early or coming in late.
Okay, so why don't we move it to that date, and I wish you all good health? Please stay healthy. Nobody come up and be sick out of nowhere. Brian, I wish you good health, too, and a happy holiday season. And I wish I had been at your party last night, we would have had a great time.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
So, thank you very much.
Mr. President, is there a second to that motion?
Is there a second to Ms. Perry's motion, seconded by Mr. Smith?
And Mr. Cardus.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith is our next speaker, followed by Mr. Cardus. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very disappointed to hear Ms. Perry's conclusions on where we're at today, and I have to compare with her, unfortunately. What I don't understand, folks, is, you know, the charter commission a couple years ago, Mr. Zine, you remember that, Ms. Horn, who's not here today, was a member of that, voted to give the authority of one person in this city to have responsibility for the Department of Water and Power, because nobody was really responsible. It was an arm-length relationship, the council didn't have absolute authority, the mayor didn't, and when things went wrong, as they began to do in the 1990s, nobody could go over and say, I'm responsible, let's fix this. And so the commission did the right thing initially, and that was, let's find somebody to be responsible for the Department of Water and Power, that is, an elected official, and can stand before the people of this city and say, it was my responsibility, I take responsibility. You never did, nor did that commission, abdicate control to one person, and that one person is not, in this case, the mayor of Los Angeles, but his minions who go over there and run that department. We have let Matt Zabo run the Department of Water and Power. We have let Jeff Carr run the Department of Water and Power. That's what has gone on today, because that commission, in their wisdom, said, we need someone in control, but they vested in one person, and that one person has chosen to give it to his staff to go run. And so in six years, we've had four general managers, we've had three president of commissions, we've had a churning going on there, and they're always political people. They are not experts in the field, they are not people that know how to run a Department of Power. Matt Zabo doesn't know anything about running the Department of Water and Power. I got news for you, and when the president of the city council and a vice president of the city council go to that commission and want to speak to them, and Matt Zabo says, go away, you're not welcome here, there is something damn wrong with this system, and it needs to change. That needs to change, folks, and this is wrong. We cannot sit here and let this system perpetuate. You have an opportunity today, or next week, as it may be, to change the system in a positive way, to put the people back in the equation, and the people in the equation are the 15 people that represent 250,000 people in this city that sit here every day, and have to go back to those people at night and explain to them what's going on. Not a mayor that sits over in his nice little house that the people provide for him, and doesn't have to go back to any constituency at night and tell them what he did. You do, and you have people like Jack Humperville and others that will watch you, and we will not get away with the shenanigans that have been going on at Water and Power for the last decade since that commission action. If you want to perpetuate the, I won't say the word I want to say, I got in trouble last time. If you don't want, if you want to perpetuate what's going on in Water and Power, then vote against this proposal. If you want change, meaningful change, transparency, you want to put the people back in the equation, then you must do that. You did it last week, don't knuckle under, don't be afraid of this mayor, he is not being re-elected, he is gone. Stand up for the people in your district and go back to them over the weekend and next week and tell them, I stood up for you, we are going to bring meaningful change, and there's going to be a change that you can be proud of. Maybe it's not perfect, and yes, Dennis, we need to do this to all commissions, that's why the motion was brought in last week to do that, but as Ms. Perry said, that will take two years. You can't do it in today's vote. You're just here to override the mayor's veto. It has nothing to do with all those other issues, Mr. Zine, and others who are hiding behind that analogy. So today, ladies and gentlemen, do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you. And thank you for your self-control in this family viewing audience. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you very much. I support Ms. Perry's, Councilmember Perry's, motion to put this over till next Wednesday, perhaps we'll have the full complement and an opportunity to see all 15 council members where each one stands on this matter, and then as to whether or not we're going to give this matter to the voters to decide that the array of responsibilities will be spread out a little bit more. Right now, it's very concentrated. As Greg Smith said, it has convoluted itself into, it appears that the mayor's office has undue influence on this particular department. But if you wouldn't mind, on my time, Mr. Smith, what did you mean when you said that some people told some council members that they couldn't go to a DWP meeting or something like that? What happened? Was somebody there when Mr. Smith referred to, I think, Garcetti and Perry went?
I think we had a desire, Ms. Perry and I had a desire to go behind and talk to the commissioners, and it was made clear that they weren't to speak to us directly.
But who made it clear to you that you shouldn't go talk to the?
The doors were closed, and we weren't allowed in there. I actually don't, it wasn't a mayor.
No, but by some action, you weren't allowed, because if I go to somebody's place, a business or house, I'm not going to knock on the door, but if somebody tells me I can't go in, then I want to know who said that the two council members couldn't go in? Okay, Ms. Perry, I'm sorry, on my time.
No, no, I don't remember.
No, no, we walked in the back.
Ms. Perry, do you remember?
We walked in the back.
I think they were having a private one that we were excluded from, wasn't it?
Where the commissioners were, and Mr. Carr was back there with Mr. Zabo.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. Yeah, we walked in the back. Mr. Garcetti and I walked in the back before the commission meeting started, and Mr. Zabo and Mr. Carr and Mr. Carson were back there, and they were talking with commissioners. They were all kind of in the hallway. I think Mr. Ross was there, and Aaron was there, and I would assume that they were discussing the ECAP issue, because when we went back there, everyone immediately felt silent and looked pretty stunned when we were back there. Then we went and testified at the table, and then went back again after they went into recess, and three of the folks were in the conference room, and they shut the door as we stood in the hallway so that we couldn't hear what was going on, I assume, I don't know. But yeah, it was pretty clear that we were not welcome.
But who spoke to you? Who verbally said, don't go in, or you can't go in, or you shouldn't go in?
It was a physical act of shutting the door of the conference room.
Oh, really?
In the area where the commission members meet, so that we could not overhear or see what was going on.
Wow.
Yeah, if I could answer that.
Mr. Smith, on my time.
I spoke to Mr. Alpert, Alpert, the other day, who was the president of the commission at the time. He was unaware that that took place, and I say, we were discussing whether or not he would resign from the presidency of the commission a couple days ago, and we talked about this issue, and I mentioned, this could have been resolved if he had just worked with us, and he said, well, I thought we were. And I said, no, our president of the council was excluded from your executive session. And he said, I was unaware of that. Who authorized that? And I said, I don't know, I just know they were not allowed to come in, and he was irate, because he felt that we could have negotiated this agreement, ECAP, and solved all the problems, the mess we went through, if that had taken place, so.
I wasn't prepared to expose such an example, but that's a perfect example as to why this should go on the ballot, and since my time is up, Mr. President, I'll push my button again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
Mr. Smith, they put Red Bull in your Wheaties this morning? The level of Mr. Smith's emotion and passion usually is aligned to a level of fear for not winning a vote, but in this particular case, it's not, it's not an issue of whether you support the mayor, or whether you fear the mayor, it's a question of whether, whether you trust that the council will do any better. And do we, do we not, do we change the system, really, if the council and the mayor are weighing in? We can weigh in. In fact, I remember when DWP saved millions and millions of dollars in services in the energy debacle, and how everybody lined up to claim credit for how great the DWP was, and yes, including politicians who have spoken on this floor today, lined up to say, that's our DWP. And now, when the ratepayers are upset about the rates, now we're trying to quickly position ourselves to claim that we have no control of DWP, we got to seize more control. I think that's a gross exaggeration, but if it is true, then why not let the inspector general figure that out, and come back to us with a report about exactly what changes should be made? I thought that's why we were putting that measure on the ballot. Otherwise, we're making decisions in anticipation of the inspector general that they should be giving us advice on. So it's not that I'm opposed to the council necessarily doing this, it's actually a very small thing to have the ability to question the general manager, but which I think we can do in many ways now. But what I really want to do is have the Office of Public Accountability come back with a report as to what we might do to improve the trust level between the ratepayers and DWP, and that may very well include allowing the city council to have this authority. So I'm not fearful of the mayor, I'm not prejudging whether or not the council should have this authority. authority. And I don't think the voters really see this as a major change. I think the voters would rather have the inspector general tell us what to do, because they view that position as being more objective. So I don't think we should clutter the ballot, for one thing. I don't think we're changing, we call this major change, it's not major change. We have the power to change right now if we really wanted to. And I'm not sure that the voters aren't as fearful of the council as they are of the mayor. Have you polled it recently? And so I think, for all those reasons, we shouldn't put this measure before the voters. And but if it comes back, and now the mayor's proposal, he came back and said, "Well, we should assess all the general managers on an equal frame." That's something we should analyze, and Ms. Perry's motion will help us do that. So we will have the opportunity to reconsider this, but I would like to do that with the information that is derived from the Office of Public Accountability. And I think if we do so, we'll probably do a much better job. And that's why I don't think this should go on the ballot.
Thank you, Mr. Alakan. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is probably the most lobbied vote I've had since I've been on the city council in the last five and a half years. You know, I did a lot of television, and it was all about making the democracy work. It was all about informing and educating the public so that they could participate in this democracy. This is a democracy issue. We've worked through this process for months. We've heard the DWP and all of its shenanigans, and when we had the gun to the head in our last budget, and we didn't know where that money was or where it wasn't going to come from, it really raised to me a lot of issues that gave me an appreciation that our role is accountable to the people in a democracy. So I want the people to decide this, and it should go on the ballot. To say, "Well, we'll do all three departments," that means it's 2013. Most of you who are part of that 2013, like seven of us, are out of office. I still could do a third term, so it really won't be there from your end, and God knows if it would ever surface up again. But the truth is, it surfaced now through a very contentious process and a lack of credibility with this Department of DWP. We've seen more managers come through than Carter has liver pills, I mean, constantly. Who's in charge of that place? And it goes on and on and on and on and on. So the people held a series of hearings. I went to the one in Mar Vista, my people looked me in the eye, and they wanted a ratepayer advocate, of course, that was a no-brainer, but this was also something that basically says to the community, "You decide if you think the city council is responsible enough as a group to weigh in on the votes on this issue." So that's what it's all about. But the backroom politics, and "Do this for me, and I'm done for you," and all that kind of stuff, there's a certain point when you have to look yourself in the mirror and say, "What are we doing here?" While the democracy requires us to let the people make that decision, frankly, and I want the people to make the decision, so continue the item, but I just want to go on record and make it very clear, I want to override the mayor's veto and put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I would just hope that we not forget about many things that have come up in the last year or two. And it wasn't the mayor's office, it was the council that got to the bottom of it. When we think about the transfer of funds, we relied to, just blatantly, at this table, we relied to ongoing, when we talk about ECAF, we didn't get the right information until an objective third party came in and brought it to us. We would have never gotten the information on that issue. Rate increases, we've been told over and over about rate increases being for infrastructure, for renewable, none of that is going on, but we find that 30% of every dollar spent in the DWP is for pension, not for infrastructure, not for dealing with renewables, it's for pension. And then you add on to that 157% increase in medical costs, that has to take you a couple of more percentages between 40 and 50%. So you're getting to the point of looking at what the promises are and what the realities are, and you find that there is absolutely a need for a better supervision. We also know that in dealing with the issues of just getting commissioners approved, we asked as a policy of this council, four years ago, about a 12-point plan that the CLA put together. We have yet to get the mayor's office to comply with it, and many instances, we don't even have a clue who some of these people are that are being appointed. So if we can't get commissioners vetted, how are we going to get all the commissions redone? And so when you think about the body of work that we do, there's nothing that's big that we ever get done at one time. Some people are working on issues that started years ago. And so I think we have to be honest with ourselves, and we have to then think about the little small indiscretions like P-card, where people are using city money, and then we have people that are not working, riding around in city trucks and having lunch and beer. Those are true indications that we do not have supervision. And then it's the only department that we have that we've had at least two consecutive interim general managers. How long are we going to go through that process of having all of this kind of, these issues come before us? And then we sit on our hands and say, "Let's just do it all in one whack, let the mayor keep appointing the interim general manager, let all these things keep going." I know from my community, they expect me to take action. I can't go to them in a meeting and say, "Well, we just have to sit on our hands because the mayor hasn't decided to do it." We're all leaders in our community, we're all been elected to make independent judgments about what's going on. I think it's up to the people to decide on the charter. We talked to the charter commissioners here recently, and I think it's clear that some of the things they did in the charter were inappropriate and are now clearly have failed. One of which is this whole issue of changing the dynamics of the commission, where the mayor appoints the general manager, he appoints the commissioners, they do not have rotating terms. So in effect, you don't have an objective oversight of this department. And so I would hope that we think about this, that we continue it, but that we come back with 10 votes to make sure that the people of the city of Los Angeles that's paying the hundreds of millions of dollars as ratepayers get a chance to have their voices heard.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much. You think of the history of this city and what created this city, was a lot of things. But mainly, the Department of Water and Power created this city. And over the course of time, I have seen things that I have not liked. I love the Department of Water and Power. I love the fact that today, when I was driving on North Broadway, I saw two workers, working real hard, Mr. Parks, almost had their head inside a meter vault to try to connect some business. And around the city, people are working all the time. But what's not working is the center table. And what's not working is this table. I think there's great people who work at Water and Power, but the center table of this city is not working. And that includes all of us. And I have great respect for the mayor, and I have great respect for people who try to do the right thing. And I do believe the right thing now is to continue this matter and to have a full and robust, as Mr. Rosendahl likes to say, discussion, because I think it's important. I'm honored to be in this position, but I know I'm not the same person, any way, shape or form, as Mr. Farrar was and his colleagues due to the charter change. This council doesn't get the respect as a body, and it's a short period of time. It's two years, or four years, or six years, whatever. The long-term health of Los Angeles will rely on our ability to continue the great success that Water and Power once had. And again, it still has great success today, there is still water flowing and power coming, but the challenge of the future is what we need. And I think our council, and our mayor, and the commission will be better served if everybody could be on the same line, and I duly believe it would not hurt them if it had this oversight. But I wanted to stand for Water and Power, because everywhere in this city, they're connected to us, and they have done many good things. In the past period of time, and I've said this before, it went into a period like the Los Angeles Police Department. For 20 years, we talked and argued about the Los Angeles Police Department. Now, the last two years, it's been focused on Water and Power. I think if we could correct that, we could move forward and continue to serve the city well. I support what Ms. Perry said, and I also want to accept what Ms. Perry said, is no one in the city receives a bill from the Port of Los Angeles, no one receives a bill from the Department of Airparts, but we are connected through our Department of Water and Power that serves us. So I think this would be a very important matter that we should take up as a whole body next Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Ms. Perry.
Mr. Zine, thank you. And, you know, I was looking back over the votes, the 10 votes that we had, and I was trying to figure out where those two votes went. And I realized, one of them was you, you went away, and the other one was, well, Mr. Westen's is not here, so I'll talk to him when he gets here. But, you know, we're at eight today, and we had 10 the other day. And you remember when I said earlier today that I hope that everyone of those 10 people who cast their vote did so because they believed in the entire package, not for any sort of strategic reason of being able to, you know, from a process perspective, sustain a veto. So again, I'm going to reach out to you, Mr. Zine, as a friend, because we are friends.
I reach out to you, Ms. Perry.
The other night, and we will continue to be friends. We will continue to be friends. You're in the president's chair, you're not supposed to engage in?
Oh, I'm just reaching out to you.
You just reach out to me, and I say, "Mr. Zine, where did you go? Where did you go and why?" And what? Where did you go wrong?
Ms. Perry, let me inform you that the vote has not been taken.
No, 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 I'm just saying, where did you go?
You're accusing me of something prior to the act.
And I hope that you'll come back.
Thank you very much.
All right?
You completed now?
Um, you know, I can press my button again, we'll see.
No, you got a minute 39, but Mr.?
No, 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 you know, I just want to put that out there for you.
I'm fine up here.
Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Cartness.
Call for the question.
Very well, thank you. So the matter is now requested to be continued to Wednesday?
Wednesday, December 15th.
Wednesday, December 15th, where we are scheduled to have a full council, 15 members. So on that, Mr. Clerk, we take a vote?
Unless there's an objection.
If there's no objection, no objection, it'll be continued to Wednesday, the 15th. Very well, that's the order. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 22 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Number 22, no cards on that matter. Seeing no speakers, open the roll, close the roll and tablet the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to adjourn the special and go into the regular?
Yes. Back to the regular.
Council has motions for posting referral?
Posting referred.
That's just clear.
Announcements, colleagues, announcements. Mr. Labonch.
Tonight at East Los Angeles College at 7 o'clock, Mr. Coretts and I will be cheering on Fairfax High School, as Fairfax plays in the city championship against Chatsworth High School. We wish Chatsworth well, Mr. Smith, but Mr. Coretts and I will be cheering. And also, I'm going to ask that Mr. Parks, if you could follow me up with this announcement, because tomorrow, there's a big game. And I'm going to ask, Mr. Parks, make the announcement on that.
And while we're waiting that, two other announcements. Mr. Parks, go ahead.
Thank you. Just want to announce that we're going to have a major football game, 1 o'clock tomorrow at the Coliseum, Crenshaw High School against Carson for the CIF Championship. Also, the Coliseum, based on some recent events dealing with electronic concerts, is going to kick off a program to educate young people about the harm of using ecstasy. And with that, they're going to have "Think It Through" as the title of the program, and they want to make sure that anyone that comes to the Coliseum is aware that one slight indiscretion just might cost them their life. But the game is going to, second time that Crenshaw, it's second consecutive year, that they're going to be representing the city championship, and last year, they went to the state. So we're hopeful that it's a great game, and certainly look forward to bringing Crenshaw to the chambers if they're successful at this game in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. This weekend, we have a couple of events as well in Council District 13. At 10 a.m., the Echo Park Holiday Parade will be going on on Sunset Boulevard, and Mr. Reyes and I welcome everybody to come to that. My naval service this weekend precludes me from being there, but I know it'll be a great parade. Also, at 10 a.m., the Hollywood Community Pals Celebration, which you can see all of your favorite police officers dressed up as elves and Santa, and some great, great gifts are going to be there at the Hollywood Community, well, actually, at Hollywood City Hall is where they do it, next to the police station. And also, at 1 p.m. on Sunday, Mitchell Tarrina Gardens will be planting a tree at Mitchell Tarrina School. Mr. Labonch and I represent that area, and we expect a lot of people there for a great new community garden. And finally, the Thai American Community Day of Thanks will happen from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Barnstall Art Park on Sunday, great Thai food, great Thai cultural festival, and we invite everybody to come to that. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. While reminding our Valley viewers that Military Care Package Celebration Operation Gratitude, California Army National Guard at 17330 Victory Boulevard, corner of Victory and Louise in the San Fernando Valley, we will be preparing packages for our military personnel to be shipped overseas, so if you want to come by tomorrow, 11 a.m., Military Care Package Operation Gratitude, volunteers are welcome to help, package for shipping off to our military personnel overseas. Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Just like to welcome all of the Pico Union residents. We are having our annual holiday festival, Fire Station 13, 2401 West Pico Boulevard. Again, this is for our Pico Union community, hopefully you can join us. And at noon, Sunday, December 12, Lincoln Heights is having its Christmas parade. It's a parade that's put together by the local community, the chamber, and all the volunteers. Thank Lincoln High School, again, it's on Broadway, and we're starting at Lincoln Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And then Mr. Coretts.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Also, tonight, we have the Third Annual Christmas Tree Lighting at Glassaw Park. It's on Egorock Boulevard, 44 Egorock Boulevard, and that area is shared by myself, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Reyes, who are proud sponsors, along with the local neighborhood council, to start that tradition again in Glassaw Park. 44 Egorock Boulevard, tree lighting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. We adjourned earlier this week in memory of an extraordinary civil rights and Democratic Party activist, Shirley Roberts, who died sort of her 80th birthday.
We're just on announcements right now.
This is an announcement.
Okay, go ahead.
And I wanted the public to know there'll be a memorial service this weekend for her. On Sunday, December 12, at 3 p.m. at Congregation Column E, 1200 North La Brea Avenue, and in lieu of flowers, her family is urging donations to the LA branch of the National Council of Jewish Women, or the Transgender Economic Empowerment Project at the Gay and Lesbian Center.
Thank you very much, and appreciate that. Along the lines of that, that's Friends of the Center, P.O. Box 51896, for the Gay and Lesbian Center, Friends of the Center, Los Angeles 9005, and the Council of Jewish Women, Los Angeles, 543 North Fairfax Avenue, Los Angeles 9036. Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts.
Mr. Parks.
Just want to advise the public, the Eighth Annual, Eighth District Toy Giveaway is going to be at the Baldwin Hill Shopping Center, right behind the Magic Johnson Theater, it starts at 10 o'clock. We want to thank the fire department, also the Baldwin Hill Shopping Center, KJLH, and the Rigolets for the assistance in putting that together. We expect about 3,000 toys to be given away on Saturday, the 11th.
Ms. Perry.
I meant to ask for 22 to go forth with.
Okay, without objection, we'll send 22 forth with. If there are no other announcements, if I can ask everybody to please rise for adjourned motions, and just before that, two excuses.
Yes, Mr. President, there was an excuse by Councilmember Smith to be excused for Tuesday, December 14, for city business, that meets council policy, and Councilmember Westen for January 19, 2011, for city business, that also meets council policy.
Thank you, without objection, those will be excused, those excuses will be granted. Excuse me. Councilmembers, I wish, Mr. Parks, if we can please rise for adjourned motions? Thank you. Ask that we adjourn in memory of Peter Corpus, who passed away November 22, who was the Development Director of the Search to Involve Filipino Americans, SEPA. Originally from Hawaii, he came to Los Angeles 20 years ago and immediately became immersed in advancing social causes that he cared about. Peter was a founder of Barangai, an advocacy group for Filipino gay Americans, and he was an active leader with API Equality, which was fighting for marriage equality from an API perspective, an arts advocate as well, a former development director with the East-West Players and Phil-Am Arts. He served as the treasurer of the Filipino-American Los Angeles Democrats and was an active member of the Stonewall Democratic Club. He was a tireless advocate, and for those of us who knew him, he always made you laugh and smile. Filipino-American, Hawaiian, and gay communities and civil rights advocates mourn his loss but celebrate a life well spent. And I know I was in Washington, DC, working this week when both Joe Sorrell and Shirley[1785.00] Roberts' adjournments were made, and I just wanted to very briefly thank Joe Sorrell for being such a friend and an inspiration and a mentor. And it was one of the greatest joys of being in office, co-hosting the tradition that has gone on since my predecessor's predecessor's predecessor, Mr. Ferraro, and he hosted all the small cities of around Southern California to bring us together in community whenever we went to the National League of Cities. But certainly, Joe and his great love for Hollywood and what he did for the San Gennaro Festival and his personal friendship meant so much. And Shirley Roberts, it's difficult to imagine a world without her. Able to be at Cedar Sinai on Monday, she passed late Monday, Tuesday morning, but she would visit me quite frequently, and she was the best person in this city to give anybody a kick in the pants in elected office and to tell you what you needed to do to keep your eye on the ball and to keep pushing forward and to be progressive and to do the things you believed in. And Shirley was a dear, dear friend of my wife Amy and I. We worked on so many different projects together, and if ever there were a way to leave this earth and to move into heaven, Shirley was able to do that, just surrounded by so much love. It was literally standing room only when she left this earth in her room, and people singing to her and whispering to her and praying in so many languages. And for the entire community that loved Shirley, or Mama Shirley, as we say, we will certainly miss her in Los Angeles. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we also move, that we adjourn today in honor of Mary Toni Lucas, who recently passed away at the age of 36 after a long battle with cancer. Toni, as she was known to the El Sereno community, was very active with the Stallions Football Team, a local team that helps and promotes positive activities with young people, getting them involved with football and cheer. She was one of the parents who was very active, always supportive, always willing to lend a hand, and was known for her enthusiasm for helping our young people and showing the pride of El Sereno. She served the organization for over 10 years, volunteering her time on many occasions. She was known by the youth sports community area and loved taking time out of her own schedule to serve others. Mary Toni Lucas is survived by her mother, Norma Manchaca Davidson, her husband Jaime Lucas, sons Jacob and Jeremiah Lucas. Her funeral was held last Friday at Forest Lawn Memorial in Glendale, and as I attended, I certainly saw how important this individual was to the El Sereno community and all the love and support that came out for her that night.
Thank you. Mr. LaBons.
We all have great people who help at our parks, from an actor, a writer, when his retirement, Jim Tartan. He used to spend a lot of time with the people at Palm Pacific Park and helping out with the park advisory board. He truly was a remarkable individual. He truly is one of those remarkable parks that has something for absolutely everybody there. I ask for adjourned in memory of Jim Tartan, and is survived by family and friends.
Thank you. Mr. Ficore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Assemblyman Anthony Portantino is a good friend of many of us around this horseshoe, and I'm very sad to have to report the passing of his brother, Michael, who left us Wednesday at the far-too-young age of 52. Michael Portantino was well-known in the LGBT community as the longtime publisher of San Diego's Gay and Lesbian Times. When he had arrived in San Diego in the 1980s, the local gay press was mostly oriented towards entertainment and social activities. Mr. Portantino was successful in his goal of turning that publication into a newspaper with coverage of news, politics, and community issues. The paper grew to become one of the largest gay publications in Southern California, with a circulation of more than 15,000. And he was quite devastated when that paper had to shut down in October due to financial difficulties in this difficult time for all print media. Mr. Portantino's paper played a vital role in the gay and lesbian community through its news coverage and through its fearless advocacy. It was among the first gay publications also to prominently feature women on the cover. Today, he was remembered as a passionate and fearless advocate for the cause of LGBT equality, and his greatest legacy may have been his generous support of social services and AIDS organizations. And over the years, he had donated more than $1 million of free advertising space to support various groups. His family warmly looked back on Michael last night, saying, he made us laugh, he made us think, and sometimes he even made us angry, as he challenged us all to live our lives to their fullest potential. We've all been touched by his spirit and passion, and we hope that he is remembered for the positive role he played in all of our lives. He is survived by his daughter Tatiana, his mother Barbara of New Jersey, two brothers, Phil of New Jersey, as well as Assemblymember Anthony Portantino, and his sister Mary Ann Portantino Duran of Georgia. I ask that we adjourn in his memory, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ficore. Ms. Perry.
Thank you. I have two adjourned motions. The first is for George Mintern Cox, who passed away peacefully on November 14, 2010. He was born in 1924 and grew up in the area of Westmoreland, California, graduated from Browley Union High School, and he was always interested in taking on new challenges. He moved to Los Angeles to attend UCLA. And while at school, he enlisted in the Navy and began training to become a pilot. At the end of the war, he returned to UCLA, where he met Mary Frances Hayes. They married in 1947, and after graduation, he attended USC Law School and earned a Juris Doctorate in 1951. Upon graduation, George began working for a small labor and construction law practice. In 1968, he joined Richard Castle, Philip Nicholson, and others to form Cox, Castle, and Nicholson. The firm grew to become one of the most prestigious real estate law firms in Southern California. And for over 30 years, George served as general counsel to the Associated General Contractors and became a prominent labor attorney and labor negotiator. And in 1971, a dispute he pursued was heard before the National Labor Relations Board, and in 1983, one of his cases was heard before the United States Supreme Court. Throughout his life, George was active in the Westwood United Methodist Church and participated in Mandeville Neighbors, the UCLA Alumni Association Rotary International Westwood Chapter. He is survived by his daughter Mary Elizabeth Johnson, son George Hayes Cox, daughter Martha Cox Middickman, brother Martin S. Cox, wife Patricia, daughter Fay, son-in-law's Mark Rennie, and grandchildren George, Megan, and husband Jordan Julie Ann Cox, Sarah Middickman, Michael Amanda Cox, and Margot Johnson. He will be sincerely missed. I also want to adjourn in memory of Frank Emi, who passed away at the age of 94 years, and he died on December 1. He was born in 1916 in Los Angeles, and he was studying to become a pharmacist at LA City College when he left to run his family's produce business on Beverly near Vermont. And by 1940, the family had expanded the business with a $25,000 investment into a full-service grocery store. He got married that year, and their daughter was born three weeks after Pearl Harbor, when the United States government issued incarceration orders for West Coast Japanese Americans, and he had to sell his business for six cents on the dollar. As a married man with children, Mr. Emi was not eligible for the draft, and yet he stepped forward as a leader of the Fair Play Committee and was one of the prime forces behind the groups crossing the line from protest to open civil disobedience. For that, he spent 18 months in the federal penitentiary in Leavenworth, Kansas. After prison, he worked as a gardener, a produce clerk, and then took the civil service exam and went to work for the United States Post Office, from where he retired and began a career with the California State Unemployment Office, where he again retired in 1982. He joined the successful campaign for government redress for the incarceration. And before becoming known as a resister, the Los Angeles-born Mr. Emi was a Hollywood-- was a member of, he was recognized for his judo prowess, and he started out as a student at the Hollywood Judo Dojo, and in 1937, became the dojo's head instructor, and he had reached the eighth level and continued to go to the dojo until a month before his passing. And remember, he died at 94 years old. In 2007, the Southern California Judo Association presented Mr. Emi with the Non-Kahn Hall of Fame Award. In addition to his wife, he is survived by daughters Kathy and Eileen, grandchildren Sister Kawoon, stepdaughter Rie, and he was preceded in death by his son Grant, who was born at Hart Mountain and fulfilled Emi's dream of becoming a pharmacist, his first wife Amy, older sister Isako, and brother Art.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourned motions. The first is for one of our fellow elected officials, sister of Los Angeles County Supervisor Mike Antonovich, his sister Madeline, also known as Mandy, sister of Los Angeles County Supervisor Mike Antonovich, born March 23, 1946 in Los Angeles, youngest of three children born to Mike and Francis Antonovich. Past Honored Queen of Job's Daughters, member of California Rangers, Ms. Pasadena, and little sister of Sigma Nu Fraternity, graduated from John Marshall High School. California State University, Los Angeles, and Mount St. Mary's College, taught junior high school English at Pastor Middle School, left teaching to raise two daughters, Francine Marie Newman and Michelle Christine Pangborn. Mandy began working for the Los Angeles County Probation Department in 2000, Deputy Probation Officer II, worked for the program Operation Reed as a community-based field organization supervisor, had an amazing work ethic, and adored her job. Set to receive her 10-year pin, loved her family and her animals, passed away November 30. Devoted mother, grandmother, sister, and friend will be greatly missed by all. Survived by two daughters, three loving grandchildren. May she rest in peace. Madeline Antonovich, sister of Supervisor Mike Antonovich.
Put all members on that.
All members, thank you. And my second adjourned motion is for Lloyd D. Paulson. Lloyd D. Paulson, born June 30 in Utah, to Hiram and Carolyn Paulson, went to grade school in Utah, graduated from Snow College in 1939 with an associate of science degree specializing in engineering, married Niva Nal on September 20, 1940, raised eight children of their own and amazing 42 foster children. Began working for Douglas Aircraft in Santa Monica in '40 as a lotsman and mathematician in 1948, went to work for the city of Los Angeles as a civil engineering draftsman. As the years progressed, his responsibilities continued to grow until he retired as a deputy city engineer for the city of Los Angeles. Active in the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, lived a life dedicated to assisting others. His faith and devotion been an inspiration to all who knew him. Last years of his life, deeply involved in the compilation of family history and the distribution of this history to family members. Survived by his sons Tremby, Arlo, and Lyndon, his daughters Freja, Christian, Charlene, Nisi, Ninan, his sister Neda Lo, 35 grandchildren, 25 great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace, Lloyd D. Paulson.
Thank you. Mr. LaBons, have you on that? Okay. Thank you. If there are no other adjourned motions, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll, and we'll next be in session this coming Tuesday. That will be the 13th? 14th? We'll look forward to seeing everybody at 10:00 AM here in John Farrar Council Chambers. Have a good, safe weekend, and this meeting, the Los Angeles City Council, is hereby adjourned.